So I think a lot of the thing, the part that captured our introduction was really not captured. For memories sake, so maybe one more time we do it quickly and then over to Nicola. So my name is Cambay and I'm very glad to have all of us here with us today. So I'm just gonna pass over the mic to Guit and then we'll pass it to the next person and say it falls back to Nicola. Thank you very much.
Thank you Cambay. So my name is Guit Faidi and I'm a member of the Tiap Comedians Resort Group. Also a co-organizer for the Metromy Program organized by the Tiap Comedians Resort Group. So I'll just pass over to Dangjima, Kavion Chosiru. Introduce yourself.
What is my name? My name is Dangjima Kavion Chosiru and a member of the Tiap Comedians Resort Group.
Okay, the next person, that's uh... See, you have to, can you hear us?
Okay, yes. Good morning everyone. My name is Kasi Faidi from the Tiap Comedians Resort Group.
You're welcome. Eli, are you there? Eli?
Good morning everyone. Hello, I'm Tom from the Tiap Comedia Group.
Awesome. So when you have earlier introduced himself on the chat, he said he is an administrator of Wikidata and the Dengali Wikisus. So thank you very much for being part of this session today. So quickly, I'll just pass over the mic to Nico so he can quickly take out this session. So Nicola. Nicola?
Yeah, yeah, my mic was muted, sorry. So hello everyone, thanks for having me. I'm very glad to take part and to present Lixim to new people. So my name is Nicolas Vigneron, I'm from France, from Brittany in the west of France. I do speak French and Britton and English, of course. I'm a long-time editor, I'm editing Wikidata for more than 20 years now, 21 years. And I edit for since the very beginning of Wikidata and I did almost 6 million edits on Wikidata. I know it quite well. And I'm especially interested in textual information, literature and lexical information, everything like dictionary. So that's why I'm working a lot around Lixim also. And today I will introduce you to Lixim, what it is, how it works, how you can take part, create new Lixims, how you can improve existing Lixims. And I think it's very important to know what Lixims are because in the future, in the Wikimedia movement, there will be more and more things using Lixims. So I will share my screen. Can you all see my screen?
Yeah, you can see clearly.
So I'm guessing maybe you know Wikidata, maybe you don't know it, but I will quickly introduce it. So Wikidata is basically a database with a lot of information that we call items. And basically an item, if you look for instance for cat. You have animal, the cat, which has an item, items always begin with the letter Q followed by numbers. This one is very small, but you can have very long identifiers with a lot of numbers. And an item is basically a bit like a Wikipedia article, it's very encyclopedic, very general, a bit also abstract. It's not a cat, it's the ID of a cat. And you know that in different language, we don't have the same names for things. For instance, in English it's called cat, but in German is aus Katze or just katze. In French it's chat, Italian gatto or even in Latin catous. And you have different words, different names for the same things. And if you look at all the information that we store in Wikidata, all the data, you have all information relating to the cat in general, what it is, what it look like, an image for instance of a cat, a video, why not? How you call it in different language. The maximum frequency audible of sound that a cat can make, okay, why not? I didn't know that. The heartbeat, everything related to the animal in itself. But you will not find information on what is the plural of a cat, how do you translate cat from one language to another, how you can use it in a sentence, everything. And nowadays, I guess you know tools like ChatGPT or AI, they can generate sentences. And if you adjust the data of Wikidata, it's not exactly enough to generate sentences. And that's why you need Lixims. So all the pages started with a QR items, item, general concept. But you can also search not items but Lixim. And if I search for cat, here you see that I don't have the general thing like before. No language, all language in the same item. But here you have cat, the noun in English, cat, apparently it's also a verb in English. And it's different word, a noun in Irish, a noun in Malay, verb in Malay, in very, a lot of language are things starting with cat. But if you look just at the noun. Yeah, so you see, we are still on Wikidata, but the interface is a bit different. It's not starting with a Q, but now it's starting with a L, L like Lixims. And this one is one of the first ones, so L7. And you see that it's called, it's written cat in English and it's a noun. You can see things, yeah, all the data are very specific to the word in English, to the noun in English. So for instance, you have an example of sentence where you use cat, leaping with his Spanish cat up on the balcony. Here is the word cat, things like that. You have what we call homographic Lixims, other Lixims that are spelled the same way. So here I guess it's probably the verb in English, yeah, verb in English, which is also cat. And you have link to dictionaries, because Lixim is also always related to dictionaries, where item is more to encyclopedia. And if you have a lot of identifier, because in English there's a lot of dictionary, maybe I will show it in other language. And then you have what we call sense here, which is what it means. For instance, what it mean, it's mean cat and there you have a link back to the item that we had to before. You have translation, lot of translation. And you have a secondary sense, the first one was, what was it exactly? It was domestic feline animal. And the next one is more generally, cat in general, not this person. Or it could be also a man, can be you called a cat apparently in English. A devotee of jazz, if you like jazz, apparently you are just fan, you can call yourself a cat. And then you have what we call forms, forms is, so a Lixims is the word in general, like all the forms, all the way you can say the same words. So you know that for a noun, for instance, you can have a singular and a plural. You know that for verb, you can have the first person, second person, the infinitive, past, the future. There's a lot of way to write it. But it's still the same word, because cats in singular and cats in plural, yeah, it's cat. So that's a first example of item, Lixims, sorry. Maybe we can look for a different word, I don't know, Nigeria maybe? So if I look in items, I have Nigeria sovereign state, but, and you see that it's a description in general. But if I look in... Yeah, so strangely, it's in German first and you see it's a proper noun, you have Nigeria in English, in Italia. And you see it's, for a proper noun, it could be more or less the same in all language, but still, I can take French for instance. Because for instance, in French, it's not exactly the same, we put a little accent in the A to do Nigeria in French, not Nigeria. And you see here, you have a data specifically of French, which is grammatical gender, masculine. Because in French, for some reason Nigeria is masculine, we say le Nigeria, not la. Why not? And you have only one sense, which is pay, which mean I can add it actually in English. I can be more specific on the sense and I can say, what is the description in English, African country, I guess, or state, maybe? Sovereign state, yeah, that's a good. Very often, the description for an item is quite similar to what we call the definition, what we call the gloss, which is close to a definition. And since I'm here, I can improve pay on the free, for instance. Yeah, I improved a bit Nigeria. And you see that you have just one singular. And in French, there's two singular, because very often we put the accent, but sometime, we also accept, it's also correct to put it without the accent. And that's basically a Lixim, you see that this one is very short. But the essential is here, you have one sense and at least one form, a Lixim should always as that, of that. So if we look for Tiap, for instance, Tiap language. And to find Lixims in a language, there's a lot of tools, but the one I prefer is to look just here for tools and what links here. I can then here say, only give me Lixims here. And there, maybe you can help me improve words in Tiap. So I have no idea how it works, so maybe you can help me. So, and I'm sorry, I'm gonna pronounce it probably wrong, Abalongkun, I'm not sure. And you see that the language is Tiap, it's apparently it's a noun. And there's a gloss definition in English, but not in other language. So if you know what this word mean, you can here go edit, add a new language and in Tiap you can add some definition, some correct definition. This one is a bit strange, yet in undefined, I'm not sure. And you have an ID. And you have a sense, not perfect, but good. And you see that there's no form and that is very bad, because an item, a Lixim should always have a form. So for instance, at the very least, what you put on top of the page should always also be there. And I don't know, maybe it's a singular, maybe it's a plural. Maybe you can go back quickly if you know. Oh, Maya added identifier to Nigeria, perfect. If people here know this word, maybe you can add, if it's singular or plural, you can add, if it's singular, you can maybe add a form for the plural. Maybe I can quickly check online.
It's singular.
It is singular, okay, thank you. And is there a form for plural?
The plural form is Ayabalampho. It's just after the first E, we have YEE.
Okay, maybe you can do it and improve it directly, I can put in the chat directly. Antonomus Grandis, thank you May. So while someone could add another form here, a very important thing is to link the word to the item corresponding. So you can say item for this sense. And apparently it's this species of insect, so I will publish it. And if we go back quickly to Nigeria, if I reload the page. Yeah, now we have one more identifier that has been added. Thank you May. So here it is. Right now, there's not a lot of words in Tiap, but I guess you can work on it. One tool I can quickly show that is very useful is called Ordia. And here in languages, you can see all the Lixims in all language. You see that we have a lot of Lixims in German, in Russian, Danish, Estonian or you see that English strangely is only fifth. And if I am searching for Tiap, I think there's, yeah, 33. So it means that if you do, if you create one new Lixim or two new Lixims, yeah, you can very quickly improve and make big numbers, there's a lot of things to do. And if we go there on Tiap, you can see again some numbers, so there's 43 Lixims in Tiap. Almost all of them have a sense, that's good. But some of them, 13 of them don't have actually forms right now. So that is something that you could work on. And here you see some example of word in Tiap, verbs, adjective, past participle, okay. It's strange, probably it's a verb to be seen. And you see that some statistics, most of them are nouns and you see some other things. I don't know Tiap, so I will not try to create a word in Tiap, but I go there. And you have a button which is called create a new Lixim. Before creating a Lixim, you should make sure it doesn't exist. So for instance, I will work on English, I will search. Lixims comedic. And that comedic is not, it's an adjective to be comic, related to comedy actually. There's comedically, the adverb, and there's not comedic, the adjective. So you can create it, okay. So first you indicate what we call the lema. Lema is the main forms, the more common form, how you say the words. Then you choose the language, for instance, yeah, it's a word in English. And then what we call lexical category or sometimes part of speech. It's what type of word it is, so for example, is it a noun, an adjective, a verb? So in this case, it's an adjective. And to create an Lixims, that's all, you just need to do that. Be sure that you create a Lixims and not create a new item, Lixim is there at the bottom. And that's it, I can create a new Lixim in English. Yeah, and you see that when you create it, it's empty. And it's not by default, it's a gadget that I installed, but I have a big reminder, oh, you should always put a sense and a form. So a form is quite easy in this case, it's an adjective, there's just one form and there's nothing specific to say here. Is there something I can put? No, I don't think, maybe positive degree of comparison. And a sense, since you can enter every language you want. If it's a Lixim in English, it's good to put at least English. And if it's not English, you can put in your own language and you can put several definitions. So for instance, comedic is related to comedy. In French, I can say, relativ. And that's very limited, but that's the minimum, always put a sense, a form. If you have more information, like where does it come from? Does it have a gender, is it an animate, things like that? If you have pronunciation, I don't think there's a pronunciation for comedic available, but maybe? No, okay, no, sadly not, not yet. But you can record the word with other tools and add it. And which is very important also is to have identifier, like Maya was saying. And there's a tool for that, which is called Mishraminan. And if you go to Mishraminan, you can look in a lot in dictionary. If I click on languages, you see that there's a lot of dictionary. Sadly, I don't think there's Tiap, no, there's no dictionary in Tiap. So if you know a dictionary online for Tiap, maybe you can ask to be added. And I will search only in English. Searching. Oh, it's already... I was sure it didn't exist, but maybe, yeah, Maya just did it. While I was explaining, you are way too fast. So I just have, you see, right now, I just created it empty, but eh, it's a wiki, there's a community to help you. So if I reload the page, you see that Maya already added a link to Valius Dictionary. For instance, new Oxford, is it one I can see online? No, not a good example, Oxford, this one maybe. Yeah, you can see on, next on the website, an online dictionary to confirm, oh, what is this word? Yeah, of or relating to comedy, that's what I said, it's an adverb or... No, it's an adjective, but there's also it's linked to the adverb comedically. And there's not much information there. That's what I wanted to say for a short presentation, maybe I can stop for one minute if you have already question. If you have ID, you can try to create a new Lixim right now if you want, if you have a good connection also, otherwise you can do it later.
So Joseph, Nico, for those of us with the Lixims, for those who are editing using the mobile phone, would it be okay, is it compatible for them to use mobile phone to create Lixims?
That's a very good question, thank you for asking. So when you are on a mobile phone, which looks like something like that probably, you'd see that it's not possible to edit, there's no by default for all Wikidata, it's not just Lixims, it's Lixims and items. Right now, it's still not possible to edit, but you can go at the bottom of the page and go back to a desktop view. Even on mobile, on my iPhone, you can go back and then you should be able to edit it. It's not perfect, but there's a way to do it. If you, yeah, Maya is saying the same, you'll need to switch to the desktop interface to edit things. And yeah.
Again, you access this dictionary? I don't know, is there a link or the name of that dictionary again, so in case we are working on a Lixim, you can actually like go in there and get some of this information?
So if you want to add a dictionary, you have to have already a property. You see, new Oxford, American Dictionary, Oxford Dictionary of English, things like that. They are to be created by the, by the community in Wikidata before, so you need to ask. You can go for instance here on the project chat and you can ask for help, for people to help me create a new property. Or when you can go also is Wikidata LG, which is LG already, I forgot the lexical graph and call data. Here you can also have people that are specific to Lixims. There's some explanation, what is a Lixim, since when it exists or everything, some documentation. And you can ask for help for that. And yeah, also to create a identifier, you absolutely need something online. So I don't know if there's online dictionary for Tiap, Tiap online dictionary, I can share?
Not yet.
Not sure.
Yes, we're still working on it, but you should be ready till now and meet next year.
So when you will finish working on it and you have a Tiap dictionary online, you can contact me, I can help, I can help you to, 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 to help, to do the link.
Awesome, thank you. And also I have a question, two questions actually. The first question is, okay, like if one is adding entries or Lixims to a particular dictionary, let's say the Tiap, which dictionary for example, I mean the Tiap language in Wikidata Lixims, is there a specific item, I guess specific, this senses now, like senses forms, like singulars IPA, are there like specific ones that are basic, that we can use? One for plural, singular, but for speech, like a common, common ones that everyone can be able to remember? And then secondly, for those languages that are still incubator, can this you edit Lixims?
Yeah, though I will answer the second question, if I forgot the first one, please remind me. So I will show my screen again, sorry. If we go back to Ordia, but the site we had before, Ordia, Total Forge Languages, you see that right now we have Lixim in this number of languages, 1,475, which is way more than Wikipedia or even Incubation.
Your screen is black.
I will put the link here. So yeah, if you don't have a Wikipedia, if you don't have an item, if you don't have Incubation, nothing, you can still create things in Tiap or in any language, if we go to the last language. You see that you have a lot of language with only one Lixim, so eh, 43 for Tiap is not that bad actually. Or old language, things like that. So yeah, you can create Lixims in all language, sometime when you create a new Lixims. Sorry, you Lixim, if you want to create it in a language that does not, is not recognized yet, for instance, Old English maybe? Yeah, Old English does not exist yet, for instance, if I want to do historical language. It does not exist yet, so you have to say miss, no. What do you say when you don't have a language, I forgot? Old English? Oh, no, Old English we have it. What language can I invent?
There's a language, Adara, eighty, right?
Yeah, I will... So it's not a language, it's a dialect, but still. And if you, if a language does not exist yet, you see that there's a new thing that appear here, which is called spelling variant. And you have to put unsupported language, MES, since you don't have a code yet. But if it's, even if it does not have yet Wikipedia, if it's really a language, if you have a reference, a dictionary somewhere, you can use it like that. Also, we talked about property to online dictionary, but it's not always... It's not always needed. For instance, cat in Britain is Kaz. And you see that Britain is an old dictionary, old language, so it's not online so much. And it's spoken by 1,100 people only. So here I've put, the paper dictionary is described by source and I've put by hand a few, oh, a lot of dictionary actually. So you can put also, so this one actually I have it here with me. And still I can use online dictionary, both are possible. For obvious reason, if there's an online website, we prefer to use it because you can directly click on it and check. But then if there's no, this one is only in paper, so it's good to, it's also good, it's also okay to do it that way, described by source and do the thing. And you see, Britain is a bit of a weird language, so you have still a sense. Yeah, it's an anim... Oh, I can actually put again to show you in English. I can put domestic animal. Things like that. And you see that here in Britain, we have singular and plural, like that, but we have also what we call mutation. So you can add more information here if you want. And here you have one person pronouncing in audio, Kaz, like that. And things like that. And I think it's a bit like in, sometimes the plural is not just adding something at the end. In Britain, we put letter in the middle to do the plural. So it's also possible to do it like that. And if we take for instance the lexim for a verb, a group for instance, English verb, you see that the forms are... A lot of sense, a lot of sense, okay. And you have here the grammatical features is to be simple present, third person singular, simple present, you can put several tags to do exactly what it is. And even for went, the simple past in English, you can say that it's an irregular form, things like that. I think I answered the second question, what was the first question again, sorry?
Okay, sorry, the first question is, what are like basic statements that you can add to?
Okay, yeah, yeah, sure. The thing that every lexim always has is what we call the lema, the main word, language and lexical category. That is the very, very basic, you cannot create a new lexim without that. So then, but it's always there. And the identifier is automatically attributed, you don't have to choose it. And then you always need also a sense, at least one sense. It's not automatic, you can create it without it, but please be careful and always add at least one sense. And if there's several sense, like to go is to move, to change location, but it's also, what was the second sense? Sorry. Yeah, it's just to move, but it's also to move away. I'm going somewhere or, or the night is finished, I'm going home, I'm going back, I'm moving away. So it's close, but not exactly the same, so you can add several sense if you have that. Like before, cat, a cat is the animal, but it's also someone who like jazz. Okay, why not? That's two sense. But at least one is always needed. And if you go back to forms, the same, you always have need at least one forms. Some words like adverbs for instance, often you only have one form of an adverb, there's no other forms. But for nouns, there's several forms like singular, plural. For verbs, there's several tense. And there, there's no magic rule for every lexims because, yeah, in French and in English, it's not the same, in Tiap and in Britain, it's not the same. If it's a noun, it's a verb. I cannot do a specific list. It's up to you, the community that know the language, to say, oh, I need this or that for this specific case. I don't know for instance, does the noun have a gender in Tiap? Is it masculine, feminine, or masculine, feminine neuter?
No, no gender. No gender, yeah.
No gender. Do you have inanimate, maybe? No? No, I know what's up.
Yeah, we only have the definite articles. All words appear according to this system.
Okay, and for verbs, you have several tense, I guess, present, past, future, no?
No, we only add some setting, what do you call it now? Modern verbs, we only add modern verbs to make them.
Identifier, okay. For all the specific, maybe we can talk later privately, you can ask me. But yeah, I wanted to show at least how it's structured generally. And I know that you want to me...
Sorry, please Friday, can you mute your mic?
Please, my dear, I don't know.
Please Friday, are you mute your mic?
I don't know, I want to tell me. I don't know where I want to tell.
Sorry, Nicolas, for the distraction.
Sorry, I have to take her out, let's continue. Please Nicolas, continue. You are muted, Nicolas, all means.
Sorry about that. So yeah, you can say, oh, Nicolas, that's very interesting, lexims, oh, I love it, I love words, I will work on that, very good. But what, what is it useful for, why doing that? Right now, there's not much using of lexims. You can do Sparkle queries like Jan showed you on Monday. You can reuse words, you can use all the lexims to build a translation dictionary or something like that, it's possible. There's some things here and there. But one thing that will happen soonish is Wikifunction, that Luca Martineau will show you on Friday, I guess. So Wikifunction is another website, a new website in the Wikimedia Movement. And I'm not in French, sorry, I will go back in English for you. Anglais, yeah, that's it. So Wikifunction is a future website that will reuse lexims to produce some sentences. And maybe one day help create templates in Wikipedia, help building article in Wikipedia. So you have different functions, like I will take, maybe not Britain, I will not always take Britain. English or German, German, yeah, German is here. And there you have, oh, I am in English again. Sorry about that. And yeah, for instance, I don't know if you know German, but in German, we have what we call a gender, masculine, feminine, and neutral, neuter. And there you can select a word, for instance, let's say on cat, because tonight I like cat. And there it's reusing a lexims, cat. And if you run the function, it will say that it's I know cats, because it's feminine apparently. If you put dog und... Und in German, ein, yeah, ein und. And this function is specifically for, I'm not sure why it's going back in French all the time. So German nominative indefinite, indefinite article. And what you said before about modifier for verb or things like that, maybe we can create a function later, not today, to do conjugation based on lexim for Tiap or things like that. And it could be, yeah, very useful because here it's just putting the article before, but you can imagine putting a verb afterwards or things like that. And for instance, you can take WikiData item, like Marie Curie is a scientist from Poland. And then a function will use the words in lexims to create a full sentence, to create something starting to look like an article. I don't think we have anything in Tiap right now in Wikifunction. No, we have just the language itself. But that's one example. There are also on Wikidata a few tools, there's not much right now, as I said before. But if you go back on this page, Lexicographical data, if you go in tools here, you have a few tool, reusing them. And it will be, right now, most of the tools are to help creating new lexim or to improve lexim. But there's a few that can reuse them actually right now. For instance, this one, sorry, and I can do that for instance, I'm not sure what it is. Yes, you see, you can do etymological, so this one is not very important because it's always the same word in different language, but this one maybe? Yeah, this one is more interesting. It's dog again. And you see that dog in French comes from dog in Middle French, Old French, which come from Canis, in Canis, in Latin, which come from Coe and Coe in before language. So you have a lot of things like that. And if I'm doing the opposite, I'm doing this one, I wanted to do that. I'm going back in the other way, from the old word for dogs. Oh, there's a lot of dogs, okay. Not sure where it is, yeah, is the old dog word for, sorry. And then you see that in all the languages, the word has been reused, transformed, to produce new words. So you can see all the, all the languages around, all the words are, they are connected from one to another. And there's other tools, but I will not show all of them. You have one, I'm not sure it exists still, but it was used to, to train you, a bit like Duolingo or application like that to, yeah, it's not working anymore, to learn a language. Yeah, things like that to help you. Okay.
Yeah, I think I still have a question, Nicolas. Yeah, what I was thinking while you were flicking was, is it possible for us to also have a particular word? When we put the noun for like, for example, a quai, the word for cat, that we have a quai car, which is the definite article by the side, just like we're having the time code for the German version of it. Yeah, is it possible for us to also have it like that on Wikifunctions or on WikiData lexics? So that one can be able to know what the definite article comes with in a particular word?
Yeah. So we have several part, because Wikifunction are based on lexims. So if you create a function, you can create a function if there's no lexims, but it will, it will run, it will run on nothing, basically. You have a nice car, but no petrol, no gas in it, so. Basically, lexims are the gas for running Wikifunction. So I guess a Wikifunction will be very useful in the future, but you need to have some, some matter, some things to reuse it first. So that's why it's important to start, to put some data inside the lexims. And then it can be reused by many tools like Wikifunction or others. And I'm looking at, I'm just looking at the chat very quick. Yeah, thank you Maya for pointing that, but in the future, and already there's some test, some dictionary pages, because dictionary is also Lexicographical data, like lexims, you can say, oh, take the lexim and generate the dictionary page. You don't have to reinvent everything. So Maya is giving an example. I'm not sure there's a lot of example right now, it's more prototype to test how it works, but I think there will be more and more like things like that in the future. And to transform a lexim into a dictionary pages, there's a Wikifunction function in between. And yeah, the Wikifunction thing is where information aspect, yeah. And Gurock is another type, oh, that's dialect, interesting, okay. Okay, so if you have, since we started a bit late, we have 10 minutes for question?
I'm sorry, we finally would ask a question today. For example, for gerunds, for example, a particular word that has a, is both in noun and at the same time is verb also, I need to have two different lexims for it?
Yeah, yeah, it's, I don't know for Tiap, but I know that in French, a lot of adjective are actually also a form of a verb, but there's two things, there's the verb, which is a form for light, for instance, and light as an adjective also. So you need to create two. It seems a bit redundant, but it's not exactly redundant, it's two different lexim.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah, a lot of language reuse past participle or form of verbs as an adjective. That's not specific to French or Tiap.
Yeah, yeah, so for our participants, please ask, because Nicolas, we get this very soon, when he leaves us too. You have the opportunity to ask all the questions that you need, so that you don't come and be dragging us and asking us questions, we too, we don't know it. So we have someone who has experience in the whole lexim thing. And I was hoping maybe our JU editors, you have a question to ask because you also try us and we need to create lexims in Wikidata this very week. So please ask your questions. I know where you actually need clarification, so that Nicolas will help us to clarify it. And same thing with the Tiap speakers and also Fabio, who was here earlier on, she is part of the community, the New Chiam, Lango speaking community. So it really just got into Wikipedia. Okay, she, okay, she depends, okay, she's a Tiap super.
I tell, I tell you, it's praise, I thought.
Okay, it's praise Friday, sorry. So we have new community. So we have new communities coming in and they would also like to work on the lexims. And for those of us who are available, please ask your questions, uh, please come and think about the question.
Okay, so, um, uh, Nicholas, just a quick one. Um, like the Wikidata and the Lexims. So what is the difference between the two? Looking at, um, their modification, it seems like something, uh, similar? Sorry, I just have to take that out again. So, um, yeah, so what are the distinction between the two, like, uh, the, the?
Between items and lexims?
Yes.
Yeah. So items, um, is very general, the concept, the idea of a thing. Uh, like for instance, for the item on Nigeria, there's only one for all language. And you will put things like, uh, coordinate, population, uh, how big it is, things like that. Which is true regardless of the language, it's always true that it's located in Africa, for instance. But there's also a lexim in Nigeria. And this is where it can be a bit tricky. And on the lexim for inst- instant Nigeria in French, we say, oh, it's a masculine gender, uh, word in French. Uh, it's a noun, proper noun, uh, it's, uh, used like this, like that. And so, yeah, you have both, a lot of concept are in as a concept in general and as a word, so you need to create, uh, two, uh, twice. Uh, but you don't put the same information in the same way. And I guess the best way to, to see the distinction is, uh, to practice yourself. Create a new lexim for, uh, like a city or common words that you know. And you will see how it connects. It's really connected, but it's two, two parts of, uh, two different parts of the thing. And, uh, I don't know if other people have question, but, uh, feel free to contact me, uh, on Wikidata and all Wikimedia project. My username is Vigneron, which is also my family name, uh, in all caps, so user Vigneron. All caps. And there's other people that you can, uh, contact, uh, I'm pretty sure that Maya, uh, Maya two five six. Um, could, uh, help you. Uh, if you do some test, create a new lexim, you can leave me a message. Ah, I tried that, uh, can you check or what do you see to improve? Uh, I guess it's the best way, uh, to, to actually do things.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So thank you very much, uh, Nicholas. Uh, thank you so much for your time. Because, uh, prior to, before now, we're having some quite, some challenges, as you can see, our entries on the lexims are quite limited, are quite few. Because the routine is not connected, the idea of how the, the technical know-how is not connected. So that's why we said, okay, it is important we have somebody who has the knowledge to come and share with us. So thank you very much for, uh, honoring our invitation to be part of this session. And to all our guests, the audience here, I, I would like to appreciate each and every one of you. And just as Kamba was saying, that we have other language, um, editors here. So just as he is demonstrating, what is applicable to the English is also applicable to Tiap. It's also applicable to, uh, Ju and here. The format is all the same, just to follow the format and everything will work out. So where you have a problem, you know how to reach out to Nico. He's always open, I believe, despite his kind schedule, but I believe he will respond to us. So thank you very much, Nico. And, um, just so you know, we, uh, we are a baby community coming up. Uh, but we also, we, we know how to piss someone, we are looking for something, we know how to disturb someone. So just get ready for us, we, we keep coming, we keep coming. So thank you very much. Thank you. Yeah, um. So, please, is there any question, any question from, um, anyone before we, 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 we wrap it? Uh, JJ is just smiling. I know, we are meeting either tomorrow or next, so I can see Jacob is smiling too. But we look forward to having you over. Um, please, is there any question? Anybody with questions, so we can just, uh,
And maybe, maybe we can stop the recording if someone want to ask a question and not to be recorded? If some people are shy, I don't know.
I'm not shy, that's the issue.
I think, I think at this point, I understand why they are not asking questions. I understand why, but I would tell, I would say to Nico.
Yeah, that is, yes.
I just keep it to myself. Yeah. And that's our idea, not asking questions. But definitely come back with, with questions, I know, I know. So thank you very much, Nico. And at this point, I don't think we have, uh, much time to move forward. We would just like to appreciate each and every one of us here who is on the call right now. And for one reason or the other, for those who are not able to catch up from the beginning or you've been having a lot of difficulty, internet connection, the session is being recorded. And at the end of this, you can always fall back to watch the session again, so you see, you can catch up from there. So thank you very much, we sincerely appreciate you. And just so you know, uh, we just have tomorrow to rest. On Friday, we'll be coming up again, uh, to a different, uh, session on Wiki Function. So please do well to make it a date with us. It's going to be very inspiring and very educational, just as this one. So thank you very much once again, we appreciate each and every one of us. So I'll just hand over to Matthew, come back if you have any words before we wrap it up.
Yeah, thank you very much once again, Greg. And thank you very much to Nicholas for taking it, taking the time to put us through this lexims because actually personally, I would want a situation whereby all the words that we have in the dictionary are currently working on, we can move it into the Wikidata lexims. Because earlier on, we had a discussion about the Wiki Functions and we were told about this issue of lexims, but then, uh, the whole thing is a bit, uh, complex, you know. Um, but then we'll try as much as possible because this very Wiki Data is thirty thirty. We are also, we are just going to work very well on the lexims itself, so that a lot of us will be able to catch up. And whenever we have any challenge, we are going to get back to you and hopefully to find you also available to help us out. Yeah, so maybe I'll give Nicholas what, or maybe I'll give credit to give us the person.
Yeah. So at this point, Nicholas, any final words before you, we call it a day?
Um, just thank you for inviting me and to all the participants, I guess it will be useful in the future. Uh, and maybe see you at Wikimania in Paris next summer. I don't know.
Hopefully.
Yo, I forgot, I forgot, I forgot.
Yeah, we'll be arguing with you about you. Yeah, so thank you very much.
And Nicholas will take us for a small tour around Britain.
Yeah, sure.
I, I have a couple of friends in Britain, so I have a lot of people to meet.
Okay, so at this point, we just want to thank everybody. Uh, I can see Bobby is still on the call. Thank you very much, Sal. We appreciate you. Um, Pili, thank you. Favour, we've seen you. And, uh, our big brother here, Jacob, thank you very much for being a part of it. And, uh, Rio Kundi, thank you. Sam Quay, I can see you are just, you know, enjoying the session on the low key. Thank you very much for joining. And, uh, Wayham, thank you, we have seen you. I can see Dan Juma is just sitting with his full chest enjoying the session. Thank you for joining. And, uh, TFK, we appreciate you also for joining. So thank you everyone for, uh, this wonderful moment. Uh, it is actually a moment of learning. So we appreciate you. And we hope to see you again on Friday during our Wiki Function session, where we also have the opportunity to learn other new things. So thank you. So on behalf of the Tiap Wikimedia's user group, we just want to appreciate everyone, especially Nico for having taken time to be part of us. So we appreciate. So thank you and you have a good evening everyone. So bye bye.
And before we say bye bye, before we say bye bye, Nicholas will tell us, uh, how do you say bye bye mainly in, uh, Brezianish?
So in, in French, we say au revoir. But in, in Britain, we say connave.
Connave. Alright, thank you very much.
Connave.